So it is 7:00. On February 1st, 2022, the regular meeting, call the meeting to order. With difficulty, I didn't bring a flag. So if you'll excuse me not to salute the flag this evening, we will do it at the next live meeting. So at this point, if there's any public comment. Do you have anybody else that you can see? Jim? No? Okay, then we'll continue on. I'll go ask for the approval of minutes. Let's start with January 4th, public hearing and regular meeting. I did find one thing that jumped out at me for Yvonne, and that is on page two of 10. Carl Price, the spelling of his name was C-A-R-L, and it's P-R-E-U-S-S. Carl Price. And I don't know that it's Brandy Street. Is it the last, the last number, last number down on Brandy Street? Okay. Very good.
I'll move, we accept them with the slight.
Is there any other change, any other changes?
No, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Any other comments? Then I'll call for a vote to accept the minutes of January 4th, 2022. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's passed unanimously. Thank you. January 11th, the budget. Stay straightforward. Did anybody find any errors? Then I'd ask for a motion to accept the minutes of January 11th. Bob DiPietro, are you most making that motion? And a second, please. Mike Armita, seconds, thank you. If there aren't any other comments, I will call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Motion unanimously, and we'll continue on to see January 13th, 2022, the budget workshop. Did anybody find any corrections, additions, or deletions? Bob DiPietro, you want to make another motion to accept? Thank you. Mike Armita, seconds it. All in favor, please say aye.
And one abstention.
Bob Moore abstains because he wasn't present. So let's move on to the appointments. I have one. I thought I had two to the temporary. Do you all have? Jim, do we have one for the temporary building commission, the one we had? Did we get a form? So I'll just discuss it then for a minute. We were sure of people on the temporary buildings mission and why the ideas and suggestions was to ask Eric Luntz, former chairman of the public building like to serve on it, and he agreed to it. We just have not gotten a form from him. Is that correct, Jim?
We have not gotten a form.
Okay, so we'll hold on that, but with our, we're looking forward to having him serve. But we do have someone who has stepped forward for the branding committee. The town of Bolton has shown interest. Kevin Drake, he's grown up in town. Lives on Birch Mountain Extension. We have his interest form in front of you. Do you all have that? Everybody see? Okay, good. Could I have a motion? Does anybody have any comments on it?
No, I think Kevin would be great.
Great. So Mike, would you like to make the motion to accept?
Absolutely.
And a second? Adam will second it. Okay, great. Are there any other comments? All in favor then of accepting Kevin? The branding and place, placemaking focus group. All in favor, please say aye. All right, passed unanimously. Thank you.
Did, did we make, Sherry, was there a thing there to make her a full member of the temp building committee?
Thank you. It's just the next piece of paper I was getting to.
Oh, okay, sorry. It came up first on mine.
Thank you. Moving up to full member, Sherry Filipina, she lives at 45 Steel Crossings. She was a, it will now be added on as a full member. All in favor, I'm sorry, could I have a motion to accept her on this commission?
Is she now an alternate?
Correct.
Bob moves it. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Affiliation. I'd rather not say.
That doesn't have to.
No, I know. It's just funny.
Very good, very good. So we have a motion. It's been seconded, so I will, if there's no other comments, I will ask for a roll call. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Very good. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to number five, properties and facilities report. Who's going to take that one on? Jim, you want to start that? Properties and facilities.
I mean, we don't have a written report, but we did have a meeting. And I think the thing that we discussed at length was the cemeteries and some of the things that we were working on with, with those locations. I've been in touch with Kate Chambers. At this point, we're looking to connect to make a telephone call. And I got an email back from her that we're potentially scheduled for four o'clock tomorrow, and that is in regards to potentially accepting some grant to sell a flagpole at the Quarryville Cemetery. And we talked about some other improvements that are needed. And, you know, Bob Moore, I think, you know, you had a lot to offer at that meeting. If you don't maybe mind getting it from there.
Well, one of the, one of the one of the things we, we looked at going back, you know, the North Cemetery, one of the issues, we have a section of driveway that has, has deteriorated. However, it has a lot to do with a row of pine trees that were growing on the abutting property. Pine trees have been removed, but the stumps are still there. So what we're looking to do is, and the owner is, said he will be removing them. Obviously, this is not going to happen during the winter months, so done in the springtime that allow us to refinish that and pave and repave that portion so that that, that portion of the driveway will be completed. That, that was a, and it's right now, it's just gravel. It's, it's passable, but it really, it doesn't pay to do anything because you have a root system that's under there, which are going to be ripped out when we, when the trees and travel put in, roll, processed, and then paved.
Very good. Thank you.
And we also, and we also talked about a gate. Remember, we talked about a gate entryway, I'm sorry, into the lower part of the cemetery at, at, at the center. And that's still, I'm waiting back to hear about, you know, getting permission. There doesn't, doesn't appear to be an issue, but still waiting to hear back.
Jim, when you were talking to Kate, did you also ask about possibly paying for signs to sign, put signs up at the cemetery?
Well, we've only communicated by email thus far, but, but that hopefully won't escape my memory bank when we talk tomorrow afternoon.
Very good. Any other questions about the, anything else? Mike, Mike, did you want to add for the properties and facilities?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, good. Then we'll move on. The budget report? Twenty twenty-one budget report. Jim, is there something you want to add to that?
You know, again, you know, we're, we're really right on track. You know, there's a, a couple of columns that, you know, as having been mostly expended, but those are, are columns that we would expect to be mostly expended by this time of year. As I reviewed the report, I didn't see anything that stuck out to me. Again, you know, Jill also takes a look at this report. And usually if she has a concern, I know this time last year when we were looking at stuff, there were some things highlighted in yellow for us because she wanted us to talk about them. We seem to be very much on track with our spending. You know, we're in the, you know, 50 to 60% range with the spending for most of these budgets, which really is on track for where we are in the course of the year. I would entertain any questions if any board member has a question about anything in specific on, you know, this particular budget item. Yeah, I think we're, I think all of our department has, are really doing pretty well, you know, managing the funding that they've been privileged to receive this year from the taxpayers.
To the, to the senior board members, I ask, is this something we need to take action on? Is this an action item or is this just for information?
Information.
I heard an echo. That sounds good. I like it. Then I'll move on.
Can I ask Jim just one quick question?
Only one?
Just one. This is, this will be an easy one. Fire marshal Jim, are, are, we're down around 12%. And I know we had bumped that up a couple of years ago to try and get in compliant with everything. Are we still on track? Or is it the fact that you're not able to, to do that, that we're lower?
Let me find that here.
We're at like 12%, something like that, I think.
All right, 31, 32.
Am I reading?
Yeah, yeah. Right, we're, we're at 31%.
I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong line. Yeah, okay. All right, that makes sense.
Yeah, and really, it's, you know, we, we did a lot of work last year and really got on track. And so the, you know, the work is a little bit easier this year than it was last year. So frankly, we're, we're just not in the field. So our hourly wage for the deputy fire marshal is, is a bit lower than what we spent last year. So we are really in very good shape. You know, I appreciate, you know, this, this board a couple of years ago, really funding this department to the extent that it needed to be so that we could be in compliance with the Connecticut general statutes with regard to what we're supposed to do. And I think the Bolton for community because of the work that's being done. And I know we've expanded our duties a little bit, you know, helping to take care of Knox boxes and things of that nature, which again, I think is an extraordinary measure toward helping the fire department do their job in an emergent situation where they might have to gain rapid entry into one of our buildings that's so equipped with Knox boxes. So there are ideas and ways that we can continue to do those kinds of things to help, you know, assist the fire department with, with the paid personnel that we have. We're certainly looking forward to continuing those kinds of efforts. I know that as we get more into our ESO program, which is the new program, we've purchased the software program both for the, the reporting and for the, the goal is to do our inspections through that software program as well. That has proven to be challenging thus far, but we're continuing to work through those challenges. So it's, I, I think we're really in a good place. Thanks for asking a question, Mike.
Excellent. Thank you.
So we'll move on to the budget transfers. We have from the seniors.
Yep, we got the tax collector's report, which is largely unchanged, which is largely unchanged from last month. Where, where our collections are at 98.27%. So we're, we're really in good, in good shape with that.
And just so everybody, Adam, I know you probably know, and I'm sure Pam probably knows, but that's 98% or 99% of 98%. It's, we never budget, we never plan a we're shooting for what, 98, Jim?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It's 90, 99% of 98%.
Yeah.
The only thing that isn't mostly collected is the supplemental motor vehicle levy, which just went out.
Yep.
And also too, the, the, the other supplemental bills that went out because of the change in the mill rate. It's not a lot, but still that, that hasn't been collected. I mean, it won't show on this one. Even tighter.
Yep. Yeah, we're in pretty good shape.
Yep. Okay, now we can do the transfers.
Alrighty. We have the economic development transfer of $80 or from office operations supplies to dues and fees. If there are any questions, we'll take these on as a group then. The tax collector is transferring 230 to professional educational training. We have third one, the emergency management, building and land use. And I have a transfer of $694 from the building and land use budget to the emergency management. And it's from the payroll category to the payroll category. Questions?
There's, there's also one addition from the commission, which I don't, that would have gone out in today's supplemental package.
I don't have that.
Do you have it?
I do not. How, can you read that one?
That is a fire commission request for transfer of $500 from professional education training to office operating expenses. You know, just to purchase supplies to organize files, the folders and toner cartridges.
Are there questions from the board?
Just one. We have one from the seniors too, don't we?
Yep, we have, I think she read that one, then she.
I, I, I might have missed it.
Yep, seniors, $500 from repair and maintenance to general supplies.
Yeah, that's one of these, any, that's the
device.
Devices to be put on your catalytic converters since earlier that hit, and that's a costly repair. And these devices for a few hundred dollars to go on make it extremely difficult for someone to come in and easily clip or saw them off.
Yeah. It's a good investment.
Yep.
Maybe we should all get them.
Well, if your car is exposed.
I don't need one.
Apparently, those particular vehicles, the quite valuable. It is
Oh, yeah.
That heavy duty Ford chassis, those, those catalytic converters are quite valuable. And we, you know, we, we had toyed with the idea, because what we do when we have bad weather is we store these things in the wash bay at the town garage. We had toyed with the idea of enclosing that with chain link fencing so that we could secure the vehicles better. But, but this is a much more it, it's a, it's a solution that's going to cost us a whole lot less. So we think this is the, a good route to try.
What we need to do is send all our vehicles out to California and have the low ride put on them. So you can drop them right down to the ground at night. Be able to get under them. The vehicles that sit up higher, the easiest to hit. That's the
Yeah. Is there, is there any questions on any of the transfer requests?
No. Or I'll make a motion. We adopt all of the transfer requests presented tonight.
Second?
I'll second that.
More seconds. Are there any other comments? Then we'll call for the vote. All in favor of accepting the budget transfers, please say aye.
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 Passed unanimously. Thank you. Discussion workshops and possible dates, Jim?
We'll get the AP report next, right?
I had number six, ongoing business. It's just a discussion of additional budget workshops, but we can
Well, we didn't, we didn't put specific data, and I, I think what we had discussed is that, you know, we, we do have a meeting Thursday night. And we will be getting through the balance of the you know, of a couple of details that we don't have yet to share with you. And then what we would like to do is, is not have extra meetings the following week. And that gives us an opportunity to get caught up on minutes and put the budget workbooks together as we begin to have meetings to sit down and actually discuss as a board, each of these budgets in detail and see if there are cuts that we would like to consider or places consider potentially adding money or, or accepting somebody's ad package where they've asked for something additional in their budget.
Jim, or excuse me, sorry Pam. Are we going to actually get a budget book, a hard copy?
Yes, we're going to, we're going to create those next week.
Okay, good. It's just, it, some of these are a little hard to follow. I've got my laptop open next to it, and they're not in landscape, they're in portrait. So it's hard to read some of them, so.
Yep, that, that is our goal is to actually create those during the upcoming week. Now that we've got most of the budgets created, you know, as you know, we, we found one mistake last night as we were going through stuff on the Kappa Committee. So we're going to make sure that any corrections that have come up, we get those corrected before we create those books for you.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Very good. So await those other dates as let's skip down then to the number seven, new business, the AP detail list.
Had a chance to look at, is there any questions on any item in the AP list?
Adam, you look puzzled.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to get through all of it, so I just wanted to do.
Okay, take, take your time. We've got
What is? Oh, I see. Why were there property tax refunds? Do we know?
Yeah, my, my understanding is they paid out when the first tax bill went out. And then they, they paid a second time. And I think it was, I recall, one of those is pretty significant, like $11,000. Yeah. Lori, Lori pointed that one out specific to me. So that, that, that was a case of somebody paying their taxes twice.
That's a mistake I don't know is I could make.
Not for, not for that money.
That would hurt.
Are there other questions?
No, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Adam, would you like to make the motion then to accept the AP?
Sure, I moved that we accept the AP report.
And somebody wanted to second that. Mike Armita will second it? Is there any further discussion? Then we'll call for the vote. All in favor? Very good. It's passed unanimously. Moving down to the first selectman's report. COVID-19. We had a command meeting on Monday. It was discussed again, and the number, the good news is the numbers are going down. One of the discussions in that meeting was Bolton has a very high rate of vaccination amongst adults. And we have a lower vaccination rate between the five and 11-year-olds. That is lower than the state average. So the discussion was, we would move forward in talking with Hartford Healthcare and see if we can get a clinic going for the community to see if we can put one together for the, that group 11, five and 11 years old and make it easy, maybe on a Saturday, maybe at the library, someplace that's convenient and a positive, positive, so we can get a positive return and get our numbers up. Anything else, Jim, on that? They'd like?
I, I think that was it. And we, you know, we can talk about this either now or when we get into my report, but we did, we did get another another set of test kits and some surgical masks for the school. We delivered the surgical masks to the school. Pam and I have kicked around the idea of trying to do something a little more low-key this time with the distribution, you know, possibly finding, you know, maybe a Tuesday evening and some daytime hours where people can come by town hall and pick up some additional test kits. Carrie, if our vulnerable population needed more, and to get back to me, I guess something that we didn't know until we had a meeting recently with her is that somebody donated some test kits to her. She, she announced that on Monday, so currently she doesn't have an additional need. You know, last I chatted with Chief Dixon, there was not an additional need at the fire station, but some tests were keeping in reserve for our critical staff, like fire department, public works, and, and folks of that nature. So that's kind of, we haven't formulated that idea 100% completely yet, but that's kind of what we've kicked around so far.
Any questions or suggestions? All right, we'll move on then to eight B, bond council. We've had someone reach out to us wanting to be considered for bond council. And one of the discussions was that, is it possible to be able to find some savings in bond council? So we would like to ask if this, if the board would consider opening it up, and we'd have what to bid for bond council for this year?
We don't have any agreement with the current bond council to go for any particular?
We have a current agreement that has no end date. It continues, it continues as long as both parties are in favor of continuing the agreement.
How long, when was the last time we bid it?
I can go, it goes back at least a decade.
I, I know when we discussed this with Jill, you know, Jill, if we're going to be going out to bond anytime soon, she had some reservations about doing it simply because the bond council that we have has a significant history with the town and felt that that had value. I know that the, the current agreement was executed between the board of selectmen and bond council in August of this last year. So it's a pretty, pretty fresh agreement. Who know that we've had, I think it was Pam, if I'm not mistaken, it was two different firms that were interested in, in giving us bids for that business.
What are we paying now as an hourly rate?
I, I don't remember off the top of my head. I can certainly share that document with the board if they would like.
I'd like to see it before we decide to go it out, to take it out to bid again.
Well, one of the things that I think I'm sorry, Adam, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, I mean, I assume that the existing one, the existing council probably bid it again if they just signed the contract in August. They probably did the same numbers, but
Yeah.
It's not something where necessarily the lowest rate is the one we want.
No. No, you're right. You, you, you're absolutely.
So one of the things I've in looking, looking over some of the suggestions and comments that people have made to me is that some bond councils will take you on as the lead and may pass you off to their junior partners or to take you on as the lead and may pass you off to their junior partners or to assistance versus other bond council, which will see the project through from beginning to end. So I thought that was a question that we should be asking. If, Adam, if you're comfortable with that kind of a question?
I suppose, I mean, I, what's been our experience with current bond council, I would assume Jill and, and the other finance department people know that, but candidly, just because the person who sends you the letter or communicates to you is a partner, doesn't mean they're doing the work.
Right.
Especially if it's a blended rate.
I, I haven't had a lot of experience with this, with, with the bond council, but, you know, we have had questions, you know, here and there. And when we've reached out and we've asked questions, it has, has been the, the attorney that's answered the questions. It hasn't been passed off to a junior partner or something. That, that's been my very limited experience thus far. And I think yeah, if, if we want to entertain this, perhaps we should really take a get a copy of that contract to each of the selectmen. And I think, you know, inviting Jill to a conversation, you know, she's the one who's had the greatest experience with bond council. I suspect, you know, Bob Mora and Mike Aramita and Bob DiPietro have had some, but but certainly I think Jill is, has the regular contact. And I do, and I do value her opinion. So I think, you know, we should, would, should have that conversation with her.
Or we could also talk about what is a regular schedule to put it out to bid as opposed to just as there's in, you know, whether there's interest or not at great, but it really ought to be something you put out to bid every four years or every five years or every three years. Some, some regular schedule that we can sort of talk about. With her and with, with the staff.
That's a good idea. I think it's, you know, it's something to put our eyes on to, certainly if we're going to be having these projects coming up in the, in the very near future, if they pass. Very good. All right, a couple other things. Freezing video is one that's driving me to distraction in college. We're talking about, we got, had a resident contact me and ask that we consider to have, look at revisit again having Bolton allow for people to pay their taxes twice a year, not just once a year. We've had the question over the years, a few times, I remember certainly as being a taxpayer for the discussions go back and forth. When interest rates were very high and it behooved the town and we made quite a bit of money. When interest rates were high, when we collected it once a year, but as we all know what interest rates are right now. So I would like to entertain some discussion for just five to 10 minutes. What this board would like to do. Is that something that you would like to ask this gentleman to come forward and speak on his wishes? Or would you like to ask Jill to come forward and talk about how much money we make right now with the low interest rates and where interest rates are going? We are one of the only towns in the area that still collects taxes only once a year. So I'd love to have some discussion, Bob, DePietro?
I remember when we discussed this before, the cost to the town, they should times exceeded what we possibly would gain. So I'll be curious as to what reasoning this person gave you for why they wanted to do it twice a year.
This, this person is a small businessman and it was trying to get money together all at one time in certain hard for him and he, he would, he thinks twice a year would be better. And he, he suggested that we bring it forward and ask the townspeople what they would prefer was one of his suggestions as well. But as I mentioned it to Jim, and he said, I believe you said in your town, Jim, please correct me if I'm wrong, that you can pay twice a year, they only notify you once what your tax bill is and then you are expected to pay it second payment at the, in six months later. They do not, they do not mail twice a year.
Yep.
Mike Aramita?
Yeah, you know, we've, we've talked about this as far as 30 years ago and, you know.
How old are you, Mike?
I'm, I'm old enough to know 30 years ago for sure, and then a few. But, you know, when, when interest rates were five, six, seven percent bottom money we were making on the once a year. Right now, granted, we're not making a whole bunch of money, but even 1%, when we're looking at budget increases of 2%, 2.5% that fail, a 1% interest is a significant amount of money when you are trying to offset that 2.5%. And interest rates are going to go up. I mean, it's, you know, I remember my dad with my first house saying, you, you know, 3%, are you crazy? Wait till the rates go. And then they went to 13, 14, 15%, but, you know, they're going to go up. And, and if we make a change like this, we'll never be able to change it back to recoup that money. And, you know, it's, I, I just, I don't see that we can, you know, when we're playing with these small margins of two or 3% budgets failing, that we could give up anything when it, you know, a 1% of our total money is. And which budget is we going to take that from? And, you know, I, I just can't. I, I can't support that.
Adam?
I, I agree with that. First, on the charter commission, this was an issue that was addressed in the charter and people actually came to talk to us about it. I know that the commission debated this and we came to the, essentially the conclusion that the Board of Selectmen could always change it if they wanted to, but we didn't want to. Charter, but, but for practical reasons. First of all, I think if you send out one bill, but you expect people to make two payments, that's unfair to elderly people who, and other people who might not be paying attention. And will forget to make the second payment on time and will be hit by it with an 18% sudden interest on that second month when they make, you know, when they realize a month later that they didn't pay it. So you should, in fairness, if you're going to make two payments, you should send two bills, which is a significant, significant. Second, if you're getting two payments, that means two rounds of processing. And that means, as I understand it, that's part of a budget for additional help because the tax collector doesn't maintain the staff to process 1,000, 2,000 payments in a short period of time that they would get that second time. So they'd be hiring people to do that. And, you know, that's an expense. And the third thing is that most with mortgages pay over the period of the year anyway. So it's only the people who don't have mortgages or have mortgages that don't escrow it, that are paying those two, those, that one big payment. And, you know, they're not paying a mortgage. So how hard is it for them to put, to budget for that one payment? And frankly, for a small business person who has to make, as I do, estimated tax payments four times a year. I think we know when we need the money and we put that aside. And if you don't, you're not going to have it twice a year either. So I, I just, I mean, I understand that that's frustrating for people that to get a big bill, but it's because they didn't, I mean, death in taxes, right? You know it's coming. So it's pretty easy to organize yourself to put that money aside if you have it. And if you don't have it, it's not going to make a difference whether it's one payment or two payments.
The other this would be to put it forward as a question. We could do it as a survey question on one of the bulletins over a couple of bulletins that are sent out by email. Or we could save it and put it on the referendum.
I, I, I would rather not do either of those. If you put it out as a survey, people are going to think it's coming and they'll be the ones that want it will be disappointed. The others, most people won't care, but the ones that are really adamant about it will be disappointed if we choose not. And if we put it on a survey question or a referendum, then we're locked into it. And, you know, like, I just don't think we can afford to lose what money we gain on that and what it's going to cost us in the other end. And I, I'm sorry, I don't agree with the person that's, that's asking those questions. It's, you know, it, you, like Adam said, if you don't have it in July, you won't have it in January and you probably won't have it. It's, it's a matter of budgeting and.
We also just looked at a report where we have 99% collection.
Right.
So it's not like people are, it's not, it's not like people are not paying their taxes because they only get one bill a year.
Right.
So it, it's a sort of, it's a, it's a solution in search of a problem for me. And with all due respect to the, to the taxpayers and to the citizenry, they get a referendum on me every two years. They can vote.
Yeah.
Bob or Bob?
No, I, you know, this is the one I, I battled with this one for years, going one way and the other. And, yeah. And in my business, it's always look at the numbers at the end. Well, Adam, you've hit the nail on the head. We do look at the numbers and the collection is there at the end of the year. And yeah, it is difficult. I'm a small business guy. And I, you know, I have to set aside, which is like everybody else, so at the end of that year. And it's sometimes it's, well, anyone who's in business on themselves, hard times is not, so you always, you have to somehow adjust for those hard times and, and, and we, and it's not easy. For the regular homeowner, it's just that regular payment. For us, it's different. And, and it's, it's a lot of discipline involved in there. And lots of times it's, it's tougher. That's, that's, that's what it is. And, and you all make a good point about we have, our margins in our budgets are very, very tight in this, the switch over would, would have a significant effect in the first year and, and following years after that, so.
Thank you. Okay. Bob, DePietro?
No, I said, we're ahead.
You're good? Okay, so I see that there's no, no consensus to move this question forward. And thank you very much for your consideration of it. And one of the last things is a report from the Bolton 300th that there's the desire and the project to put flags up along the parade route is going to move forward and the, with the sense. So we have that coming up. And then the last part to add is that we need to talk about the Memorial Day Parade. Has anyone had any conversations with anyone? Does anyone have a feeling for the Memorial Day Parade? We have not had one in two years. But I would like to propose that we do have one, allow for one this year.
Well, hell of high water. We're going to have this parade if I'm the only one walking in it.
I mean, how you feel, Bob?
Yes, that's exactly how I feel. And if John Toomey would like some assistance, I'd be more than happy to assist, assist him in, in setting it up.
I will reach out to him then tomorrow and I will make that offer. Is that consensus? Adam, how do you feel on that? Bob, DePietro, Mike?
I'm, I'm, I'm not strong either way. I can see reasons not to do it, but, because I don't know where we'll be and at that. At this point, it looks like it'll be okay.
I'm the, I'm the absolute optimist.
Bob, DePietro?
I would love to have the parade lead off with a tractor pulling a trailer and have MC on.
Maybe I'll be pulling the trailer. Am I the beast of burden? Is that what you're?
I do have one, I do have one request, and that will be that there will be no candy thrown. This is not a Fourth of July parade. It's not like a type of parade. It's in, in memory and memorial to those who gave, given their lives in service. It's more solemn. So I will be requesting that no candy will be thrown. I think it's a sa, a safety reason as well, but to me it's a in respect, in respect for the parade. All right. For those thoughts, administrative report, the monthly report, you've all read, I hope the outline of what Jim has. Is anything that you'd like to highlight, Jim?
I mean, I think most of it speaks for itself. Does anybody have any questions on anything that was included in the report this month?
I have a question about the Anthony, Mark Anthony letter. Could you just summar?
Basically, what we said is that, you know, based on, you know, conversations with fire department and engineering team, we, we are still challenged to take a full-size fire truck over the bridge. And that we are still actively looking at trying to find solutions for that. And in the meantime, we would do the absolute best we can to provide, you know, protective services for those citizens on the other side of the bridge. I asked them if they had any engineering information that they could offer. And those letters have gone out way more than a week ago at this point, and we've gotten zero responses back.
Has anybody thought, it's just, just sort of a wild stab, but has anybody thought about contacting the UConn Engineering School and seeing if they have any students that might be available to do a project of some sort?
Or, you know. I get it, I get asked every year. So, so this is the second year we actually have a UConn engineering team doing projects for us. Last year, they, they did some mock-up work for a town hall facility. This year, that group of students is actually working on looking at bringing a water line in from Manchester into Bolton Notch. In fact, I have a meeting with that group of students via Zoom. And so normally I get asked every year if we have a project, and that is certainly a project that we can add. Unfortunately, they're not PEs, the, the plans can't be stamped. But if, even if they were able to just do the hydraulic study, so then it could get a review by a PE that, that might nearly reduce the cost of getting some engineering data. You know, the process could be moved forward. I think that's an excellent idea.
Jim is the instructor, PE?
Yeah, but they don't, they're, they're not going to, they're not, they over, they, they give oversight to the students, but they're not going to stamp the plans.
Yeah, they're not going to do that because of the liability they'd be carrying. I'm just thinking that maybe they could get, get some preliminary work done and hand it over to charge them less because of it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, to some extent, it's the, it's the streets residents that need to address this because it's to their benefit and for their, for their purposes, but still, if we can help them.
Meanwhile, the engineer, the engineering team is, is looking at, so we, we got some more information from the fire department. You know, based on wheel location and axle location. And we also have that information for the trash truck, which is going over there once a week. And so that data is being analyzed by our engineering team right now to, to see if, you know, if, if we were in a situation where the trash truck is going to put more stress on the bridge on a weekly basis than our fire truck would on a once-over basis, that gives us additional thoughts for consideration.
Yeah, I mean, you would think you could put a strain gauge on the bridge and then if they're driving a trash truck over it anyway, you'd get some kind of a base line data from that.
It, it's kind of unfortunate, the, I'm sorry, Bob, the, the bridge itself more than likely would support the weight. It, it's, it's not the bridge that's the problem. It's the, the underpinnings of the bridge. They set it on and the riprap and everything that goes into it that, you know, one, one good storm could, could significantly weaken the bridge to a point where it wouldn't be safe. So it, there really needs to be some real professional work put into deciding whether it's a, a long-term solution or it's a solution that'll last a year or, or not at all. So it, it's unfortunate. I feel terrible for the people get stuck with the big cost of a bridge and, and everything, but it's kind of only halfway there with, with the engineering study and, you know. We've, we've thought of a lot of things there. I talked to Jim the other day about a potential solution on a short term, which I've been looking into and I haven't found any. On a short term, which I've been looking into and I haven't found anything yet, but you know, everybody. Is, is working. And I think your idea of getting the engineers, the engineering students to do the preliminary work could save the residents some significant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, hope it works out.
Yeah, I just wanted to add follow up on Mike. Helen Cenya lives on Market in the Dade Road. She reached out to me. She's quite concerned about the cost. For legal that they've already incurred with their little organization in the neighborhood. You know, they are spending quite a bit of money already on lawyers. No offense, Adam, but. You know, just beware that they are ready, they are trying. They are trying from their side. It's not like they're looking for a head of.
No, I mean, they, they've been very. Been partners in this since the very beginning and, and you know, we, we've, we, as, as you know, Bob, you were there for all these discussions, you know, we wish. There was way more we could do as, as a town, but you know, we're just, we're not in a position. You know, to do that. And you know, we, we've spent thousands of dollars on the engineering team. To do the things that we've done, you know, like looking at these weight loadings with the different trucks, you know, we have. inspectors out there during the construction to make sure that. They were getting what they were paying for, you know, so, so we've done, you know, a fair bit, you know, I think we've done everything. We could sort of, you know, doing a full-blown engineering study and building them a bridge. Which, which as we've discussed in the past, would be very expensive. So I, and I, and I, and I think I get the sense that they're. Stand of limitations as a town and that they're grateful for the things that we've done thus far. And the, and the open lines of communication, I think are really important, both to them and to us. So I, I hope that, I hope that that's their sentiments as well.
I mean, there is theoretically a mechanism where they could. Have a. Private district that would. You know. Blow to bond. Put a long-term lien, you know, caveat on each property and pay it over 20 or 25 years for the cost. And the town could even do that and, and make a benefit assessment to them. In some, in some way, there are, there is a statute that allows for that too, for a public improvement that only serves one, one neighborhood. It's just that. You know, the cost of that is. And we're talking about a million dollars or three quarters of a million dollars, right? And for, what is it? Four properties? That's a lot, that's a lot to pay even over, even over 20 years.
Yeah. And, and I understand even, what is it? Eight houses on the road or nine houses? Not all of them.
I think it's seven.
All right. Not, not everybody was in favor of paying.
Right.
You know, so they.
Right.
That would be absorbing that.
Like as the, as a group, they could all do that. They could declare themselves, you know, a property association and. Go out to bid for that and get a bond and do it, but.
Property Association is actually in their deeds, but they, they stopped doing their. Stop doing their annual filings with the Secretary of State, so it went, it went default.
Right. But they can.
I think right now, the, the initially. Adam, your idea is, you know, what can we do now rather than look at long-term and being able to provide. If we can, some engineering data, it's, it's only going to help solve whatever the solution is. It, it's just going to benefit. We can do it. And, and without a cost to the residents, that's something we should absolutely try and try and put together.
I agree. We should give them technical assistance wherever we can and we should, you know, try to facilitate things wherever we can, but. I, I just don't feel that it's responsible to the rest of the taxpayers of the town to take on a, that kind of, that kind of expense.
No.
You know. For it being paid.
If I can, if I understand what we're saying, that we're going to offer student intern. Some of the engineering work to look at the portion of the. Footings that are needed. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, we, we can't offer, we can't offer that. What we can do is say that. When we communicate with the Yukon School of Engineering. In the fall, we will put that forward as a project for consideration by the engineering students. So what happens is we develop projects. By what projects they would like to take on. So we can, we can't make a promise. All we can say is that. You know, we'll put it forward as, as a project to, you know, affect work on that. And I, I think the piece. That would be most effective for them is to do the hydraulic, hydrologic study. Because the area that drains, you know, around Bolton Lakes and then down through that Bolton Notch. Upriver i- is very significant. And. I know some of you have probably heard this before, but when I asked our engineering team. You know, how long would it take you to do those hydraulic calculations? Thinking maybe if it was reasonable, it's something that, you know, we could have considered paying for on the town side. And the response I got, well, is if I didn't have to answer the phone, I didn't have to eat lunch. And I had nothing else to do, it would be. A solid week of work. Just to do the calculations on the hydraulic analysis for the, for the drainage. So I think if there's a piece that we could potentially do. That might save them the largest part of money with the engineering students, it would be that. And then I think it would be akin to a third-party review by an engineer to really, instead of collecting the data, they would just be reviewing the data. Accuracy, which I think would be a great basis for all of the other components of that design.
Yeah, because it's probably between a $5,000 and $10,000 item, just all by itself.
At least, but we, we don't lose sight, Pam, the fact that we're talking next fall. For students that come in September. It's not something that would be happening between now and fall. And even then it takes weeks of their. It's not something that you'd see any results from until probably this time next year.
It would be right. Right.
But if I, if there's a consensus from the board to have Jim move forward with us, then. We need to get to the university as they're starting this session so they can make plans for next session.
They contact me in the fall, just, just before, or either, either early in the spring or in the fall, just.
So you don't reach out to them ever?
Oh, that, well, I mean, we, we communicate pretty regularly because we have a group of students working for us currently on this project. Oh. But, but certainly we, in my conversations with the professors, we can let them know that this is what we're thinking as a possible project for next year.
Is everybody comfortable with that? Very good. So there's consensus, Jim. Thank you for that.
Yeah, just, please. I, I just don't want anybody to let the people think that this is something that's a guarantee or that it's going to happen or it's going to save them a fortune because. E- even if we put it forward, which I think we will, because I think we all agree that we could put it forward to the students, they may choose something else. You know, so it's, it, it's not a, not something that we can tell them is going to happen and, and we shouldn't get their hopes up.
That's true. But if we can get, if it's, if it sounds good and it sounds like a great. Early, perhaps we'll get, be the one that's chosen.
Yep. But, you know, I just, I don't want to get people's hopes up that, that this is going to happen for them because. It, it never fails. When, when I get my hopes up, it, it doesn't always work out. And I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want them to feel the same way let down by the town again, so to speak.
Okay, Mr. Pessimist, thank you very much. Is there, is there anything else under the administrators officers report?
The, I think it was today, requesting that the Board of Selectmen approve the Bolton Road Race for March 13th, 2022. This is an. Annual event that is normally blessed by the Board of Selectmen.
Do you want to make a motion to, to accept it? We, we need a motion, Jim?
Yes, this is normally done in a vote.
In a second, please. Bob Moore? Is there any other discussion? Adam, Mike?
Jim, is there any issue with the date as far as town staff, the state trooper, anything?
Not, not that we, we can see. Yeah, ignore. Very little effect on town staff.
I didn't think so, but. Probably only the trooper that really has to do anything, right?
Yeah.
So we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, then I will call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye. No opposed, it passed unanimously. Thank you. One other item, just for your calendars. On the 26th is the, it's happening at. Heritage Farm by the Bolton Land Trust. It'll be, I believe, from one to four. And we'll have lots of outdoor winter activities. Please bring your own. Snowshoes and. Cross-country skis. They're looking at having a bonfire and. Other fun items happening in town. So it's going to be a great place to be. And we're going to ask the weather. Man for great weather for them. On the 26th. Thank you very much. So now we're on to item number 10, the executive session. Discussion of the separation agreement for the highway supervisor. And at this time, I would ask for a motion that we move into executive session.
Also, a move, a move to include Jim.
Thank you. And Mike Aramita?
Second.
Now that we have, is there any discussion on executive session? All right, then I would ask that at this time, the taping be stopped and we ask.